Good morning. I called over to the Lake Havasu City Council Budget CIP Work Session on Thursday, May 11, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch. Jim Dolan.
Hi, Kelly. I'm here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is our public hearing. It's a presentation, discussion, and potential direction to staff on the budget for fiscal year 22, 23, year-end estimates, fiscal year 23, 24, annual budget, and a five-year capital improvement plan. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Good morning. As you've seen before, this is an overview of the budget process to begin with, talking about the budget development. And then the budget materials that were provided for today include the financial projections, revenue highlights, expenditure highlights, and then the departmental budgets. And those booklets have been available, and it gives you more detail than what we will even probably cover today. June 13 is when we're scheduled to adopt the tentative budget, and then the final budget is scheduled to be adopted on June 27. So we'll start by looking at, just having a quick budget overview. We'll look at the department budget totals for each department, and then we'll move into council discussion and questions. All right. So for the personnel section of the budget, overall, this year's proposed budget is about 10.6% over the prior budget, and that's due to several factors. All of these step increases for those employees who would be eligible for step increases are included in the personnel numbers. As discussed prior, we included a market stabilization adjustment of 5% that would be applied across the board, or at least applied and applied to all the ranges. Healthcare costs are anticipated to increase by approximately 5%. Those have also been included. And then the changes in the pension costs, which are set by state, have been reflected. ASRS had a very small increase, as you can see, and then larger increases for the PSPRS. For the general fund, there are new full-time positions included in this budget, approximately 17 for the general fund. This is a list of those. If you have questions on any of those, we can provide further detail. We have three positions there for admin services, one in information technology and two in procurement. For development services, we have included an additional code enforcement officer primarily for short-term rentals and the compliance associated with that, and then overall assistance to code enforcement in their other functions and duties. The fire department has an EMS coordinator and fire marshal included. The fire marshal duties have always been performed, but now we will have a position that's called the fire marshal. On the EMS coordinator, as you will see in many of the divisions within the fire department, those increases are pending the outcome of the certificate of necessity that they have submitted to the state for medical transport services. And then we have two positions for police, an admin position and animal control position, and then four positions in Public Works, the Public Works General Fund portion. For the enterprise funds, there are new full-time positions, 10 of those. Most of the positions in Public Works, if they are related to water utility or wastewater utility, those are in, they're put on an on-hold status. We are including them in the allocation so that when we have adopted the results of the new rate study that we're currently going through, we will be able to apply the additional revenue and then be able to spend the additional expenditures associated with that. So then the next category in the budget after personnel, services, supplies, and capital, we do have some increases by fund. The general fund is increasing, has a net increase, I should say, because some things went up, some things went down, a $7 million net overall increase. These supplemental items, which supplemental, you may recall, anything that's over and above the prior year's base budget is considered a supplemental request, and we were able to go through and provide at least preliminary approvals. For the ongoing portions, for the ongoing expenditures, there was about $80,000 in the general fund, and then the one-time expenditures, which comes from additional revenue and fund balance, that is over and above the budget stabilization reserve, we are preapproving $6.4 million in one-time expenditures. The water fund has additional expenditures, and again, a portion of those are placed on hold, and that is the same for the wastewater fund. A term that you'll hear us use today probably, again, is the term carryforward. So just a reminder that carryforward reflects any amounts that are not spent because the service supply or capital equipment wasn't received by June 30 are carried forward to the following fiscal year. So we use carryforwards when those items are not going to be able to be reflected in the current year budget. Continuing on the services, supplies, and capital category, just a partial list of some of the additions. I won't read all of them, but I do want to note that the, for police, of that $850,000, many of those items are offset with donations, grants, or other restricted revenue that's restricted for the police department specifically. So those actually have their own funding source in addition to the general fund. Parks and Recreation, we added an item called amenities and beautification to parks of $500,000. A plan will be developed, and we can begin addressing some of the deferred maintenance items associated with our parks. Again, for the fire department, the engine refurb that's up above, some of those items, that one isn't in particular, but some of those items are dependent upon the approval of the certificate of necessity. And then the fire engine refurb is also offset with grant funds at this point. We did continue with the higher fuel costs in this coming budget. We're not seeing a big, a whole lot of relief in the area of fuel. It kind of goes up and up and up, and then it'll go down for a little bit. So we are still maintaining higher levels than what we've had in the past budgeted for, so we are continuing to budget for the higher level of fuel costs. In the area of just other revenues and expenditures, again, a reminder, we did include approximately a little over $2.6 million in contingency funds for all of the funds that have contingency. General Fund, how we use a revenue fund, water utility and wastewater utility do have contingency funds. The general fund contingency is being included at the $1 million level, which is the same as the prior year or the current year that we're in. We have about $6 million additional revenue that we have included, so that we will, if we receive grants or donations, we will be able to actually spend those. The budget stabilization reserve in the general fund is included at the 50% level. This reflects about, you know, six months of operating revenue, so it helps us to be able to react to any economic downturns that we may experience in a more timely manner by having the budget stabilization reserve in place. State shared income tax, there is an increase anticipated for fiscal year '24, but future years are likely to show declines. The effects of the changes made at the state will actually start impacting our budget negatively in FY, for our FY '26 budget. The first year, we're estimating about a $400,000 loss, but by the third year, we're having, it's about a million dollars, slightly over a million dollar loss in that revenue category. The property tax rate is proposed to remain unchanged. However, since there's been an increase in assessed valuation, according to the county records, then that will generate an additional $275,000 for that assessed value increase. The new construction portion of the property tax total revenue increase is a little lower $84,000. As indicated by council at a prior council meeting, you had talked about dissolving Improvement District Number Four for the McCollough median. So we have included the costs in this budget, but we have removed the revenue. So we're assuming no tax levy in that improvement district for the McCollough median. We have included some additional revenue in the water and wastewater funds, just so that any increases from the rate study can be included in the budget to be allocated and spent. So we've included those. We've given them a separate line item, so we will track those. They won't be applied unless the rate increases actually occur. So in the budget book, the financial projections in the water and wastewater funds, those are just our estimates based upon what we have showing for our needs in capital and in personnel. Those are our estimates. They're not a result of any of the rate study recommendations. It's just our estimates in order to balance the budget. And then just a recap on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The city has received eight and a half million dollars for the ARPA funds. For this fiscal year, we have three smaller projects that, well, they're larger projects, but the smaller amount of the ARPA fund. We were able to cover some of the expenditures related to the Aquatic Center HVAC project, upgrade the irrigation controllers, and also do a fire, there was a shortfall on the fire engine refurbishment item. We had just, we were just under what we had budgeted, so the ARPA funds allowed us to cover that gap. And then council allocated $1 million to the Community Resource Coalition. So that's all included for this year. And then in the budget for FY '24 and '25, there's about $7 million remaining to be spent. We're estimating about $6 million for Fire Station Seven, for the building of that, and the police facility and jail rehab is estimated to be about $1 million. That's included with ARPA funds there. So now we'll just take a quick look at the total for the department budgets. We've just put the total for FY '24 in the presentation, but in your budget book, you can see the line items, you know, in the areas of personnel, operations and maintenance, any non-operating capital outlay, and then any debt that might be associated with that department. You'll see those in the departmental worksheets. Then we did include a section at the bottom of each department budget. There's a section that reflects explanations for any variances that are material, a little more than would be normal. So if you're wondering why, why is some amount higher than this proposed for FY '24 than what we had in FY '23, those explanations should be at the bottom of that worksheet. So hopefully that will be of help in determining what the changes were in each of the departments. And again, the budgets for FY '24 do reflect many carryforwards. We don't like them, but they're a necessary evil. With the supply chain issues, we just can't control when we receive some items and some services. So for those items we don't receive by June 30, we've included them in the FY '24 budget. And then a continuation of the department budgets, just in total. The next steps in the budget process, again, Tuesday, June 13. We will bring to council the adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan and the tentative budget. On the 27th of June, we will have the truth and taxation hearing and the final budget adoption. And then on July 11, we will bring the property tax levies to council for adoption. And that concludes the presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. All right. Are there a lot of review from what we went over in our May earlier hearing on the budget? Bringing forth the direction we gave at that time is now reflected in what we see here with the different components of the budget. Are there any specific questions from any members of the council for Ms. Olson or her team?
Mr. Mayor, are you planning on going through each department, or do you want us to just pull them out?
Yeah, I think just if you have questions, we'll just go through it, and we'll give you the floor for now, and then we'll go through the rest of the council that might have questions as well.
Okay. I'm going to start with the municipal courts.
Can you just give us the page number?
Page 44 in the book. I have a couple of questions on this. I know with the opening of the courts, there's a lot of talk about the specialty courts, and I'm wondering if any of these positions, I didn't see them include a probation officer for the specialty courts.
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn.
I only ask that because currently I'm sitting on the team at the Quality Life Court with the county, and that was one of the positions that they had to hire for that, and I didn't see that in here.
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, thank you for the opportunity to address that. So, and I have it almost ready to send to you folks. We have our five-year plan, what we're hoping to have happen over the next five years. Definitely probation officer is one that we would like to have. The way that we have developed it and are working through this right now is that we use our clerks to kind of case manage, probably not the best thing, but it's what has worked for us. I think that if we were going to have that discussion at some point, I would probably want to talk with you folks about maybe partnering with either the county or somebody else to cover some of those probation services so that we're not paying for a whole new position and things like that. But I would guess that even if we were looking at wanting to have a probation officer, it probably wouldn't be until another year from now, because with everything that we have to do to get going on our co-occurring court, it's going to take us about a year to get all of those pieces in place. So we thought that it probably wouldn't be a good idea right now to say, let's have the probation officer come on right away. We're moving into a new building. We've got a lot of other things that we're trying to work through. And so we thought, well, why don't we hold off for a year, see where we are, and see if we can then bring it in. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and if you're going to give it to us, we'll take it. No question about that. But that was our thought process in deciding to not include that in this budget.
Okay. It's been, there already have quite a few people going through their courts at the county, and I see that that was one of the important things that they needed, so I was hoping we could follow in what they're doing. And then the second thing is, under the operation and maintenance other, there's $750,000. Can you tell me what that's for?
I believe that's for the furniture fixtures and equipment for the new courthouse.
Okay. That's the only extra increase that we haven't budgeted for, I guess, increases in what we're doing over there.
There are other, a few other smaller increases, such as utilities and such, that we have included. And then we also have a portion, I think there's a portion in the IT budget that also is related to the court, to the court building.
And the janitorial services and the security that's at?
Those would be contracted services for that facility.
Okay. And I just have a question. This is things that already we have at the county that's already included in our lease over there, right? So this is an additional expense for us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have at the courthouse.
And also with the savings of the rent that we're paying for the county. So there's an offset there.
Yeah. Okay. Want me to go on the next one?
Yeah, please.
One, nothing to Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, Judge, maybe you can speak to it, too. I think at the next council meeting, there was an agenda item for a grant for some of the security cost for that, for the new courthouse as well, too. So some of those costs will be offset by grant funding.
Great. Mayor, Councilmember.
And I guess I want to go to Public Works. If I remember during our retreat, there was a lot of questions on, from Public Works. I think Greg spoke on it a little bit about having enough staff to do all the projects that we're doing. So I was wondering if Greg could come up and explain, like, the positions that they're filled, if they're filling those positions. I know they're taking on a lot with the courthouse, with the downtown catalyst, and with the airport. I was just wondering if he could come up and tell us of all those positions he has in here.
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, sure, we could do that. Greg, if you want to come up to the microphone, so, and talk a little bit about what's in the budget and what's being requested, but also what our existing situation is with vacancies. A lot of the projects that you alluded to, or just brought up, Councilmember Lynn, that's a lot of what our project managers and the engineering team at Public Works is responsible for. And I think, are we at full, no vacancies in engineering, or are we one vacancy in there?
Currently, one vacancy.
One vacancy, which is good.
Yeah. We're celebrating that.
Yeah, yeah. You want to talk a little bit about project management and how those things cycle through your department?
I appreciate that. Just thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, thank you for the question. We have been short-staffed, and you can see we've got a lot of projects that we're responsible for. I think we're managing them as well as we can. We did have some, with the retirement of Mark Clark, which he was our public works manager for all intents and purposes, really an assistant department director, that was an invaluable position. When I was, when I asked to recruit for that position, I was told no, but I was also said, asked to take a global look at the department and restructure it. Let's take a global look and see what the department should look for the future, and that's what I think you're alluding to. I spoke to that at the retreat. So we did that, and we went strong. You can see we had lots of positions. I think in total, Public Works had 23 personnel requests, and 17 of those were filled. So that's really good, right? So we're making progress with positions. The two that were most important to me, unfortunately, were not approved. That was a city engineer position to kind of take over where Mark had left off when he retired to help me manage the department globally. And the other was a reclassification for our lead administrative person to be a finance and administrative division, if you will, bring her up to the same level as the other division managers. If you look at the last slide of Jill's presentation, the department budgets, if you add up what Public Works is responsible for with all the enterprise funds, it totals like $86 million. If you add up all the other departments, it's $90 million. So we're about 49% of the budget. So I was trying to get some management staff in place to help manage those funds. All in all, Public Works did great, though, 17 of the 23 requests. So we're going to have the boots on the ground, in my opinion, to get the projects done. But like I said, the two that were most important to me were not approved.
Mr. Mayor, Greg, if you could speak to the projects that Michelle was alluding to and how we handle projects with the engineering team and the project managers?
Sure. We have an assistant city engineer to run a $40 million capital improvement program annual for this year. We have three project managers and a civil engineer to handle those projects. And we have two engineering technicians to handle all the new development, all the right-of-way permitting. But one of the positions we asked for was some additional locators to locate our utilities with ALLO coming in. There's a lot of activity in the right-of-way, so we have to have personnel out there to properly locate the utilities. Currently, Mike Wolf is the assistant city engineer. He's actually managing projects himself. Each of our project managers has at least four to five projects that they're managing. We're currently utilizing consultants the best we can, and I think we're meeting our deadlines. To Jill's point, we do have some carryforward. A lot of the, a lot of the materials for our projects, especially with water and wastewater, we can't get the equipment in a timely manner. The contractor orders it immediately, and we wait months and months. A great example is the project we just finished on Lake Havasu Avenue that was delayed almost six months just to get three valves so we could replace the water main and repave that street, finally done. But that's a typical situation. So as far as project management, we assign the projects based on availability with our project managers and do the best we can to meet our deadlines.
That city engineer position, can you kind of give, like, give me an overlook of what that looks like? I have no idea what you do down there. I mean, I know what you do, but I don't know what you do, because you're like all over the place, and so I'm just wondering what that position looks like.
The city engineer position is identified in the city code and has certain responsibilities related to public right-of-way, new development, expansion of our utilities, water and wastewater. So it's a lot of coordination with developers, with Jeff Tunamann, the Development Services Director, reviewing development agreements, a lot of plan review, infrastructure plan review for expansion of our utilities. That's really all city engineered. It's really what I spend most of my time on with the CIP and the new development, public right-of-way. What I would like to do is hire a new position sometime, maybe next year I can get it approved, to delegate that responsibility to somebody else, so I can look at Public Works as a whole more globally, try to foster better relationships, improve some efficiencies. You know, I see a lot of rooms, a lot of area where we could improve, but I spend most of my time up at City Hall talking with Jeff on things that are unrelated to operation and maintenance.
There's no way that we can fill that position, because that seems like a really hefty position that would alleviate some of the trouble down there.
So Mayor, and Councilmember Lynn, one of the things that we don't do as an executive team is lobby council for items that were requested, but they've been discussed. There's a big picture in terms of what's needed through the budget process, and there's a lot of positions that are in this budget. And as we look at that, we have to prioritize and rank what each department needs to provide services to the, to the community. So there's a lot more than just, hey, Public Works needs a city engineer, should we give them to it? There's a whole background and some thought that's applied to that. It's something we looked at very, very closely. And as Mr. Frosty indicated, it's something that, a lot of these items aren't necessarily no, but they're not nows as we reassess and get through that process. So it's the difficult part with a conversation like this is when we have, we're talking about one position, we're not looking at it from a global perspective. What does that mean for the other departments? How does that impact public safety and admin and services and parks and courts and down the road, too? So we just got to, we can continue to get a close look at it, continue to evaluate that request coming from Public Works, but there's a lot of requests coming from the community. the community.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to be clear, nobody lobbied me for the courts or for Public Works. I just have been here for 10 years, and I'm seeing as we're moving forward some of those positions. And I was here when Mark Clark, like, he was wearing a lot of hats, and when he left, I saw a lot of gaps there. So I'm not lobbying for Public Works, I'm not lobbying for the courts, I just am looking at those needs. So thank you.
Just those two departments? Okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question for Public Works. Thought you were getting away, huh? I have a big concern, as everybody does, about our roads here in town, and of course we know how they're funded and through the state and all that such. And I think we're doing a, I think we as a city are doing the best job we can with the money we have. The one area where I think falls through the cracks that I'm very concerned about is, we have a lot of these utility companies, I know ALO's, you know, doing a lot around, around town and such, and they're fairly new, but, you know, Unisource and some of those, but they do a lot of cuts just randomly, and then throw some dirt in it, throw some stuff in it. And I guess my concern is, with all the money we're spending on roads, are we, do we have enough resources and staffing? I know we said, we were, we're stretched thin in a lot of areas. Do we have enough funding in the area of the city side that's monitoring, you know, before they cut the road, hey, why do you have to cut right where the tire tracks are? I mean, we saw it on a coma right around the corner here, that, you know, they cut right where the tire tracks are, and then they fill it, and they don't do a good job, and they fill it again, and the next thing you know, we're replacing the whole road. Do we have enough funding in that area that we can keep an eye on every cut, you know, when the cuts go in, that they're in a good spot, they're not doing it, you know, that they're being replaced properly? I may have seen it on, you know, even on a coma over by Rainbow, you know, they, they throw the asphalt in, they dig it up the next day, and then you drive over it, and it's already a big, huge pothole, and it's just, so I guess my concern is, do we have enough resources in that? Because I think that's also a big hole that we're missing in the street side.
Thank you for the question, and I share that concern. We're, we are aware of that ourselves, that's part of the public right-of-way and a potential for a city engineer to, to help improve those processes. We do have somebody assigned strictly to those street cuts right now in reaction to what you're seeing. ALO is here doing a great job, we're all excited for that, but that does result in numerous street cuts, and they need attention. One of the things that we struggle with is, those street cuts, we, we, we have them patch it back with cold mix, right? And that's a temporary thing. Because the, the quantity of asphalt to make a permanent repair is so small, the asphalt batch plant doesn't fire up until they reach a certain quantity. So sometimes they sit out there a little longer than we would like, including myself and my staff. But we do have one person dedicated to only street cuts now, and that includes all the utilities, not just ALO, including ourselves. We're, we're guilty of it sometimes as well. We forget about a cold mix patch and move on. So we're, we're aware of it, we've made some changes within our own structure, and have one person assigned to just follow those street cuts and follow up to make sure that the permanent patch is made properly and in a timely manner.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Excellent. Do you have any other questions or comments on?
Um, no, I'll wait till he sits down and call him back. Thank you, Greg. No, I'm good, thanks.
All right, excellent. Any other quick? All right, perfect. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Just going around the table. I don't really have any specific questions, but I do have some comments. First of all, to the city staff, you guys once again have done an outstanding job of bringing us a balanced budget that doesn't take in any debt, there's no borrowing, you're making a lot of use of, a large use of grants and alternate sources of funding, so it's not coming from our taxpayers. You know, all the, all the departments, I'm sure, have come to the table with a lot of requests, not all the requests are being filled. The fact that you're able to fill 17 out of 20 positions is pretty phenomenal. And I really like the fact that the positions that you filled were the boots on the ground, the, the guys that are actually out there, and the ladies that are doing the work day in and day out, not necessarily up in management. So that's a good thing. It makes the managers have to work a little bit harder, but the fact that, that you're able to get the people out there, as Councilmember Dolan said, you know, checking those cuts that are being patched or, or fixing the problems before they become problems is very important. You all know I hate deferred maintenance, so getting on those things sooner rather than later is better. It's obvious that you guys have prioritized the issues through the departments to make this a balanced budget and not raising taxes, once again. I don't know the last time taxes were raised. Yeah, we keep our, our tax rate the same, so there's a little bit of revenue there, but we're not raising taxes in this town. And this is my seventh budget, and we've never raised taxes, and everything has been balanced. I have some concerns for the future. As Ms. Olson said, we're gonna be losing some, some revenues, and so where there may be some more belt tightening, so it's maybe better not to fill all the positions that need to be filled, just because I'd hate to fill those positions. Next year, we don't have the money, and now those employees don't have a, a job. So I hate to bring people on board when, when we won't have the money. But once again, thank you for bringing us a balanced budget, no borrowing and no raising of taxes. So good job to you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mary Lane. Councilmember Moses, do you have any questions, comments?
No specific questions. I'll just make a couple of, you know, quick observations. I, there's a lot, there's a lot that's being done that I just, I, I think we're doing what we, what we should be doing as a municipality. We're investing in our infrastructure, putting more money into our roads. Station Seven is gonna be paramount, you know, public safety is, that's what we're, that's what we're here for, kind of deal. So I love that we have a plan for all of that. I love that we're putting some more money into our parks. And on top of all that, we also, you know, have our BSR, our savings account at 50% of our budget. I think that's extremely fiscally responsible, and, and I love that that's how we're proceeding as a city. And also taking care of our people. You guys are the most important ones to make this all happen, and so I love that we're, we're addressing those, those issues and getting qualified people in, in those spots. So appreciate everyone's hard work on this, I know this is a lot, and thank you for all of your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Moses. I do have one question, Ms. Olson. On the moving of the debt expense from the operating budget per the GASB requirement, can you talk a little bit about, did the requirements change and why that's happening? It's in several of the different departments.
Yeah, the pronouncement that was passed by GASB stated that we have to now record all leases, like leases of computers, leases of all kinds, in a debt category and not in the O and M section of the budgets. So we had to put them in, in a debt category for reporting purposes.
It's like our coffee machines that you just pay a monthly lease payment that all businesses do are considered debt, according to?
Yes, it's a liability. We've entered a contract to rent that equipment.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on the budget? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any final thoughts or discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I have one more question.
Yes.
On the, for the parks and rec, that $500,000 that's set aside for the parks, that's our, that's the parks that we currently, like Rotary, and that, that's not any new parks. Does this include like some of, I guess I wanna know what beautification means? That doesn't mean like new lighting or anything, it means like improving landscaping and things like that?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, thank you. So the, the idea here is Michael be working with his maintenance team, and, and working with some of the different, you know, presidents and the leadership in some of the leagues throughout the community that utilize or existing parks, and working obviously with the Parks Recreation Board as well, putting together a plan for what that means. But the intention of these funds is to look at our existing facilities and where we need some, some improvement. So maybe there's some things we can do at the different ballfields with, with grading or dugout repairs or things along those lines. Might have some Ramadas or some different equipment in amenities within our parks that maybe are rusting or just in need of, of refreshment, right? So either replacement or otherwise. So the, the intention of these dollars will be for the beautification of our existing amenities and, you know, with adding and highlighting our existing amenities.
Thank you, because I know there's been a lot of talk with the ballfields and stuff, and, and being down in the parks the last couple of months down there with my other job, I've, I've seen some of those needs, and I know the guys could use it. Those three new full-time positions, Jill, can you tell me what those positions are?
Those are maintenance technicians and Mike could probably...
Well, I think that, Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, you're looking at three maintenance technicians. I think it brings Mike to three, four-man crews, for three-man crews to four-man crews for our park maintenance, crews that are out there working hard on providing, you know, clean environments for, for our parks.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other final comments? All right, so this 40-minute conversation culminates after about 11 months' worth of work that occurred. I'd like to thank the city staff across all fronts. Obviously, Ms. Olson and Angie, thank you for, for all your work on putting all of this together. This is a budget that we can be very proud of. It's, it's a budget that is balanced, it takes into consideration some investments in infrastructure that we need to do, taking care of some deferred maintenance, there's no tax increases. And one part that we don't talk about too often is there's actually decreases that we've done with the expiration of the ADD. All of the property owners received nearly $5.7 million in property tax cuts this year. The dissolution of the special taxing district will be included in this year. Investments in things we've been talking about for a long time, like Station Seven, the rehab here of the police facility. There's also investments into our staff and those that are so important to delivering the work that we do for our citizens every single day. So again, this is a, a great budget. I thank everyone for, for taking into consideration all of the comments of the council since our planning session in February and then our subsequent public hearings. We will now have several items come back before us for approval and adoption of this budget as presented, as Ms. Olson had mentioned. As a reminder, the tentative budget will, will set the limits for us, so once we do that, that there'll be no change that we can do to the limits, but we can reduce expenses before final adoption. We also will have another item coming before us to dissolve that special taxing district, so we'll, we'll see that coming forward, and a few other things that will, will put this whole budget together and bring it to completion. So again, thank you, everyone, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, thank you.